Good morning, it is nine o'clock, so we will call this special meeting of the Pecos City Council to order. This is the purpose of a special meeting is to review process and work on our 2018 budget. This process begins one of the most significant duties of elected officials determining the expenditures of tax dollars for our residents, for the city, and so we take this very seriously. I'll have a series of meetings that we put this together, and eventually, within about a month from now, month and a half from now, we'll be having a budget that is brought together. Since the governing body as a group now votes on the budget, the process is slightly different from what the format has been in recent years. Our process will be to follow the format of a special council meeting where those rules apply, and the most important thing is we want to have good discussion. This is an event operation between the council and the staff in discussion, putting together a budget, and see how it comes together in this period of time. Before going forward, I want to describe one occurrence that's going to take place this morning. As some of you are aware, at 10:30, there is going to be an event at the State House celebrating the now being open with tours on Saturdays, the State Capitol, the State House. This has been an event that's been going on attempting, well perhaps as you know, since the Capitol was renovated, it has been open half-days on Saturdays with no tours and closed on Sundays. Some of us have been working on this for three years to change that, and due to a lot of effort, starting with downtown Topeka, Visit Topeka, the Topeka Chamber of Commerce, the City of Topeka, meetings were started last winter, held over a period of time with state officials, the Department of Administration, and Historical Society, actually, the Historical Society oversees the tour guides and therefore is responsible for the operation and maintaining and having the building open. From the beginning, we have always thought, this is a state facility, it's for the citizens of the State of Kansas, and therefore the state should pay for having it open. However, there were not funds available, we realized eventually that to have it open, the city needs to step up, and we have done that. Actually, an agreement was reached between the city and the state where we will be providing funds out of some of, Brett Otting has offered some Visit Topeka funds to use, that we will be paying for the tour guides, and then the state, actually the Highway Patrol provides the security, which is the other expense. So it's sort of been this long arrangement, we've worked it out, and this morning, today is the first day, it's open on a Saturday with tours. So I think it's appropriate to have a little celebration at 10:30. City manager and I are going to duck over there quickly, there's going to be a break about that time, hopeful 10, 15 minutes and we'll be back. So that's a celebration, I think it speaks well for the City of Topeka. We're stepping up, and today is a great day with the Food Truck Festival downtown, actually on Jackson, right next to the Capitol. So there'll be a few thousand people down there aware, as well as everything else going on today. So with that, I turn it over to the interim city manager for comments.
Mr. Mayor, thank you, good morning. Good morning, governing body. I will start with a few housekeeping items while everyone is listening to me, and then move on to just a few brief comments, and then we'll get started with the real business. I would just reiterate what the mayor said, we typically have a break during these meetings, and at this point, we're planning to try to have that about 10:20, and we'll sneak over to that ceremony. The second thing I would say is I think, as always this year, as we've had in the past, we have a good process, and I think some things have worked really well this year, but as always, we keep trying to add new things. For example, this year, in the past, we've always sort of had this debate about department presentations. We're just going to work those into the regular budget schedule this year, and so it's our meeting Tuesday evening. We will be having presentations from departments. Each department will come up and give an approximately five-minute presentation with slideshow and highlights, and then they'll be available for questions regarding their department. So if there are department-specific questions, and they can wait until Tuesday, that would be great, but that leads me to my next point, and that is this. At this point, as the mayor said, this is a collaboration between staff and the governing body, but at this point, it is your budget, and we will do whatever we need to do to make sure that you as a body get comfortable with it. I've always believed, in my years as a city manager, that while it's a work in progress, it's staff budget, but then, once we get to this point, it becomes a governing body budget, and we will be at your beck and call to make sure that you get what you need. We have an agenda, and we'd like to try to follow it, but as you have questions, as you have comments, really, we want to work to make sure that you get all the information you need, so that this is a good process for you. I think every year, when I make these opening comments, I talk about, this is my ex-budget, just like many of you, we've been through this a number of times, and it's always an exciting time. I say that every year, and it truly is, it really is, I mean, there's been a lot of hard work, this has been going on for months, but it's an exciting time, because it's us collectively talking about what the future of Topeka is going to be, and it's us putting dollars to that future. It's easy to talk about how streets are important, but until we actually put dollars to them in a fundamental way, they're not that important, because, you know, you spend money on what you think is important. This was a budget, our recommended budget to you is a budget filled with tough decisions, and certainly based on the feedback I've gotten, and I know some of you have gotten, the recommendations haven't always been universally popular, recognize that, and I think we'll have some interesting conversations as we move forward discussing these recommendations, but again, we're fully prepared to provide the information you need and to work with you to make sure it's a budget that you can be proud to adopt. Finally, I'd just like to say how proud of staff I am. This is, again, this has been a difficult process, we've made some extreme demands of the staff behind me, but in particular, the staff sitting right next to me, Nikki Lee and Nick Hawkins. You know, I've sat in these roles for many years, it's different sitting on this side, so I know what they've been going through the last week especially, but they've just done a tremendous job, and I'd especially like to call out Nick Hawkins, who's been here six weeks. And he's going to lead you through this, and in that time, he has learned the ins and outs of our budget, learned the ins and outs of our city, and is already loving Topeka, and that's going to show in what he talks with you about today. So with no further ado.
Sorry, city manager, do you want to do roll call at this point? That's part of the agenda.
I think that's probably the presiding officer that didn't see the budget, didn't look at the agenda very well. First item on the agenda is roll call. This isn't a council meeting, so we need to roll call.
Mayor Wogan.
Here.
Council members, Hiller.
Here.
Clear.
Here.
Ortiz.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
De La Isla.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
Cohen.
Here.
Here.
Now we will go to the, we've had our second, we'll go to the third item, is the 2018 budget process.
Good morning, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Nick Hawkins, I'm the Budget and Performance Manager, and as Doug said, I just finished up my sixth week here, and as he was talking about the number of budgets that he's worked on, this is actually my second budget this calendar year that I worked on, coming from the City of Kansas City, so it's still fresh in my mind, and I hope I don't look too worn down from it. You know, I'd like to start off, you know, Mr. Mayor, you actually gave a pretty good overview for Point 3A on the meeting format between the Budget Committee and the Committee of the Whole, so I won't spend too much time talking about that. The second point here is on amendments, and as a full city council, you are free to make amendments at any time in the budget and take action on any items at any time, but you know, we would recommend waiting until closer to the end of the process to make any formal amendments, and also just a recommendation that as you think of amendments to the budget, if you could send those to the Budget Office first, so that we can vet them and get all the processes in place to work through those, that would be helpful. And so that's, I think, the big difference between this year and previous years is that process.
And council, do you have any thoughts, you know, sort of thinking through that? We can have amendments earlier, but suggestion that we rate until probably the last, which will be the third major meeting that we have on the budget, that we would do those.
Yes.
All right.
Yes, so as you mentioned, this is the first of three budget workshops, so we will have this one today, which will focus on the general fund and the major changes there, and we'll have a couple of presentations on two of the larger adds to the general fund this year with streets and advanced life support, and that will come towards the end of the meeting. Our meeting on Tuesday, as Doug mentioned, will be a department presentation, as I walk through the book, I'll talk about, you know, what we'll talk about today and what will be discussed on Tuesday. Wednesday, we will focus on a few of the more specific funds in the city, our utilities, parking, and healthcare, and then following that will be wrap-up discussion of amendments after that, and we'll probably be using a couple of the council meetings for any further budget discussion that takes place. And so with that, I'll walk through a little bit of the budget book, you can see the calendars on page eight, and that outlines where we're at right now and where we're going, we have the budget workshop meetings, a few various council meetings, we'll set the maximum taxes levied on July 11, and then after that, tentative dates for public hearing on August 8, and then passing the adopted budget on August 15. You'll see some extra dates on here, and I'll jump to giving an update on House Bill 2088, which implements a property tax lid for all Kansas municipalities. That is one, it's based on a five-year average of CPI, which for 2018, the first year that will actually affect the budget is 1.4%. If it goes above that, then there would need to be a special election held in September, so you couldn't pass the budget in August, you'd have to have a special election in September for the public to vote on if they would approve that increase. Where we are at currently is we are projecting property tax growth of about 2.33%, which on the surface is above that 1.4%, but there are a number of exemptions included in the bill, primarily increases for law enforcement, so police, fire, EMS. With increases in that, in the 2018 budget for those two departments, police and fire, we fall under the lid and would not require a public vote at this time. Now, if you decide if you wanted to have any mill levy increases or anything like that, then we would need to go to a vote with that. There are a couple other exemptions that are being discussed on wages in the Kansas State House, but at this time, doesn't look like there's much traction on that, and so it's likely that the exemptions that are in there currently will be the ones that will stay, and will just stay the way it is. And as Doug mentioned, anytime you have any questions, just feel free to interrupt. My next point, I'm going to jump into the budget book and talk a little bit about how it's the same and different at the same time from previous years, so.
Any questions, comments at this point? Okay.
You see on page two through 16, that is an overview of the budget, you have the manager's letter for the first five pages, which highlights some of the key focuses of this budget, you'll see a lot of emphasis on infrastructure and public safety, those are two areas that were called out that we focused on in preparing this budget, and primarily, street maintenance, adding $2 million into the budget for street operations, and also introducing advanced life support capability in the fire department. Those are two that again, we'll have presentations on later this morning. Let's see, we also, we'll also cover some revenue and expenditure updates, which are later on pages, I think, believe, starting on page 10. I'll get into that a little bit later, on what the major changes to the general fund budget are, and just give a brief, high-level overview of where we're at on revenues and expenditures in totality with the budget. New to this budget book is, we've put in a trimmed-down version of our strategic plan and performance management plan, and that's starting on page 17. It has, you know, all the priorities that the city departments fall under, as well as all their performance measures. That is something that at a meeting on Tuesday night, each department will be highlighting their top three to five measures, so if you have any questions on that, we'll try and answer as many as we can today, but just know that on Tuesday, there will be a specific focus on that at that meeting, so. The second piece after that, starting on page 2029, is when you get into the department budgets, and again, we'll have a slide for each department, that will focus on that on Tuesday night, as well as they'll get into their highlights and how the budget will affect their operations in 2018, and that will be part of Tuesday night's discussion, but again, if you have any questions on that throughout the morning, you know, just go ahead and ask them, and we'll try and get as much answered today as we can, and go from there.
Governing body, in that vein, as in the past, we have staff out in the audience taking diligent notes, and so hopefully, we're able to, if this group doesn't know the answer, we'll call up a department head and see if they know the answer, and if they don't, then we'll either make something up, or we'll, we won't make anything up, we will have that group put together a list, as we've done in the past, and share that with you at the next meeting, we'll get research done and figure out what the answer is, and then, as we've done in the past, we'll have a section on each of the subsequent agendas devoted to follow-up from the previous meeting.
Good.
So after your department budgets, you get in, on page 127 is when we get into our other fund discussion, the city has approximately 30, 31 funds, the general fund being the largest. What we call out, and you'll see it in the manager's letter as well, but the ones that we've kind of called out for specific discussion are utilities funds, and our parking funds, which are enterprise groups, those are funds that operate kind of like private business, whatever they collect, they spend, and that's basically their budget. We'll be focusing on those on Wednesday night, along with our healthcare fund, and then, if you want some light reading, you can look at our personnel history on page 201, which goes through a four-year history of all of our personnel, and then, I think the last page of the book is actually a pretty neat one, it shows you a dollar or a percent breakout of your priorities, both for the city overall and the general fund specifically, and I think that's a pretty neat feature that's in the book, and maybe we might look at putting that up more towards the front in future years, but it shows you how your dollars are being spent by each priority.
Governing body, as we talk about the Wednesday agenda, as Mr. Hawkins noted, we'll be talking about utilities, parking, and healthcare fund. At this time, if there are any other funds on which you'd like to have a focus at night, you might let us know, or if you, you know, you walk away today and then think to yourself, man, I'd really like to know about Fundex, let us know, and we can have something prepared for it. In past years, we've tended to sort of get to the second and the last meeting and be like, and then there's all these other funds, and we want to make sure, I mean, they're all part of the overall budget, and we want to make sure that they're presented completely and accurately, and that, again, I'll keep repeating myself, that you have the information that you need, so if this time, if there's one that you know about, we'd be glad to get that ready.
Okay. Very good. Councilman Ortiz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It'd be helpful if we could get like a little agenda, you're shooting off all of these different things that we're going to talk about Tuesday night, Wednesday night, is there some way we can get a tentative agenda so we can be prepared for that? That would be helpful to me, I don't know about the rest of everybody, but that would be helpful to me, because I tend to study as we go, so if we're going to talk about parking on Wednesday, then I'm going to put that off, but if we're going to talk about policing on Tuesday, then I like to prepare for that. And that's why I like the presentations, because we'd always have an outline of the departments, and then we would know what to study and what to come back with, so if we could do something like that, that would be great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Good point.
Yes, and we'll have an outline, departments have put together an outline of their budgets in addition to the slides that we'll have for Tuesday, and we'll try and get you those as much advanced as possible as well.
If I may respond to that.
Yeah, sure.
If I could get that beforehand, that would be great, because I have a little time on the weekend rather than during the week, so that way I know how to study, what order to study.
And I know you distributed a tentative agenda for these three meetings, and if you have copies of those there, but then, and then also for Wednesday.
When I opened mine, Mr. Mayor, mine seemed to be the same two.
Or did? Okay.
Yeah. The attachments seemed to be the same two, so then I didn't even open the third one, because I opened the same two, so.
All right. Yeah, we'll get that.
And if I'm wrong, I could be wrong, but when I opened those, just kind of see, they looked very similar, and they were already talking about the eighth, so I knew it wasn't, I was looking for the days.
We'll try and get some of those agendas printed during the break today and get them to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, let's proceed.
So we'll jump to the revenue summary, which you can find on page 11, and that goes over the revenues for all of our city funds, with two exceptions, and one thing that I'll also point out here is, one thing that we might try and do on Wednesday, if there is time, is do a demo of our open budget portal, and you might notice a $10 million difference in those. The two funds that we are not including on here, two groups of funds that we're not including are the Topeka Mass Transit Authority, which is a pass-through payment, we collect, I believe it's like 4.22 mils that we just passed through to the Topeka Mass Transit Authority, as well as our federal grants that we get, those are mainly pass-throughs and not what we consider part of our operating budget. So I just wanted to call that out, when you look at the total, when you look at the total on our revenue summaries of our operating budget, we anticipate collecting $259 million in revenue, which is a $4 million jump from the 2015, or the 2017 adopted budget, primarily about half of that is in the general fund, and the rest is kind of spread out through new funds for community improvement districts, anticipated new funds for TIF, and kind of sprinkled throughout there, some other increases for various funds in the city. So, you know, I'll talk just a little bit about some of the major revenue sources that we have, property tax, as I mentioned, we're anticipating 2.3% natural growth there in assessed valuation, we won't get those numbers until June 15, and that's, you know, we talked about the House Bill 2088, that's a two-week, that's two weeks earlier than we normally get them, but we need to get them early so we know if we need to call a public vote or not, or so you would have time to make that decision if we need to go to that, but right now, again, we anticipate that we won't need to with this. I would say that the two biggest areas for revenue increase in the city are our sales tax, we're anticipating 3% growth over 2016 actuals. I get to the major changes in the general fund section, you'll see that's about a $1.3 million increase over our 2017 adopted budget, just in sales tax, and also, and this will be mentioned on Tuesday night as well, but development services, fees, and licenses, anticipated to grow by about $400,000. So those are the two, kind of, in addition to the property tax, the two revenues that are growing the most in the city. Our utilities rates right now are flat, and no proposed increase in rates to those funds, and that, again, will be discussed on Wednesday night. So I'll jump to expenditures and total operating budget on page nine, is, total operating budget is actually about $293 million, so 292.9 million, I'll round up on that, and again, that's about $5 million more than what we adopted in 2017, and again, about half of that is the general fund, which is growing by about 2% this next year. We again have some new funds that we'll be calling out for the community improvement districts and TIF districts, which will be new in the 2018 budget, and then you also see some increases in parking, which we'll talk about on Tuesday, they've implemented a, they've undergone a parking study, and will be implementing that in the 2018 budget year, so there is an increase in that fund.
Oh, I'm sorry, is there, we have questions?
Yes.
And Nick, I do have a question on page nine there, thank you, Jackie. On the right-hand column, you have a non-departmental, and it's actually a negative expenditure, so it's a credit.
Yes, and, you know, the primary driver of that, and this will change when we adopt the budget and add contingency, but the primary driver of that is our vacancy credits, which is included as a non-departmental account, and I can jump to that right now, we're increasing that, in the current budget, we have it at about $1.3 million as a negative account, next year, we're anticipating that being a negative $2.2 million, and that's shown in our non-departmental funds as a negative expense, and that accounts for natural turnover in positions, we don't want to put that in a specific department budget, you know, in case they don't meet that and they're matching up to their operating limits, so we put that in a non-departmental fund to continue to allow flexibility in department budgets.
And so is it fair to say that's non-departmental, though, that would do vacancy credits, but also other things? It's not just vacancy credits?
Right, we put our, you know, we put our contingency in there, we talk about wage assumptions for certain groups that may, bargaining groups that have not gone through the process of approving those contracts, we'll put in, you know, specific numbers of how much we think that's going to increase. Actually, our, you know, we'll talk about downtown grants and other non, like, social service grants, those are included in non-departmental as well, so it's kind of a collection of things that don't really fit specifically in a department budget, but are expenses or.
And the reason, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but, and the reason it's negative now is the vacancy credits overpower any cost increases?
Yeah, it just, it kind of accounts for when a position is vacant, you know, they're not using those dollars, and so it kind of offsets through that.
It's strange for me, in an expenditure summary, seeing a negative number, so that was the reason?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
And when we get to the adopted budget, I think that will. And when we get to the adopted budget, I think that will, you know, will add in the contingency for the general fund, which will be around $10 million, so that number will, will jump significantly and it won't look negative, but for the proposed budget, that's how it looks.
Thank you.
Yeah, and if you go to page 181, you can get a summary of what is in the non-departmental...
Okay, thank you.
What's in that non-departmental line.
Yeah, there was, I had a similar, not a question, but maybe a clarification. On page nine, for your 2018 proposed expenditure is 292 million, and on page 11 is 2018 proposed revenues of 259 million. That's great, but I think you might, there might be a simple answer here, just to clarify why we have a, about $40 million difference.
For most of those, for most of those funds, we add in a contingency. So, we carry forward a cash balance most years and probably 99, 95% of the funds that we have, and we just budget that, we budget probably usually a 10% contingency of, of the revenue that we anticipate to collect, just in case something, something happens and, you know, we need to go into the cash balance, we put that flexibility in the budgets.
So, when we say, so what is the size of the City of Topeka's budget? Is it 259 or 292?
I would say 292 is, usually talk about expenditures as the size of the, when you talk about the overall budget.
Good, thank you. Counselwoman Ortiz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, but I want to be very clear. We don't have a lot of money sitting in the black hole like we've always been accused of, right?
Yes, and I, you know, I can call that out right now. I think we're...
Because you know that, Mayor, we got a lot of money sitting around.
In the, the general fund, you have a, I think that the cash balance with this proposed budget would be around a little over 20%, which is about two and a half months' worth of expenditures. So, you know, the, having a, having a healthy fund balance is something that this council has put a lot of emphasis on in recent years, and with the mill levy increase 40 years ago, I believe at that time, we actually had a negative cash balance. To push it up to 20%, I know of a lot of cities in that, in just that short of time would be very jealous of that, and I think that is a great, a great, you know, a great achievement for the city. And really, like, it has, it has a lot of effects, you know, with bond ratings and things like that, when people, when outside groups see that, it puts a lot of confidence in, in the city that you have that kind of flexibility and reserves in hand, so...
Okay. City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, I want to, I want to make sure we answer that question. I mean, Nick did a fine job, but I want to be really direct about it. We do have money sitting around. Nick says in the general fund, we have about 20%, right? So, do the math, out of 100 million expenditures, that means we have 20 million in reserve. So, it's not sitting there doing nothing. It's, it's abiding by our financial policies, by our reserve policies, policies set by this body, which, as he alluded to, have gone a long way in helping us raise our bond rating and bring financial stability back to the city. So, indeed, just like in your personal life, we have a savings account, and that's akin to our savings account, and it's helped make us a more financially viable city.
Counselwoman Schwartz.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a kind of a follow-up with that question about what's in reserves. I had constituents, many that were business owners, that had this perception that we have like lots of money sitting around in the wastewater fund and, and all this. And I really love the breakout that you did on 215 of the spending in our, our budget, which shows the all-funds category, but this year you added the general fund. I mean, I, that's a really good, great breakout. But I want to get an answer to that question so that we can take that perception that we have a lot of money sitting around, whether it's in public works or whatever, that we are being as transparent as we can be, and it is there. So, I mean, that we don't have that perception that there's a lot of money in this fund or a lot of money in that fund that we aren't utilizing.
Mr. Mayor, Counselwoman, again, I just reiterate that what we have in reserves meet our financial policies, meet our reserve policies set by this body. People who do this for a living in terms of finances and investments recommend that cities have X percent for general fund, you know, typically 15 to 20% in reserve. From a utility perspective, it's typically modeled in days, cash on hand, and it's typically 90 days cash. I mean, it varies, but those are just best practice policies that we've implemented. So, again, we do have money sort of just sitting there not being spent, but any bonding agency that's going to issue bonds for us is going to require that we have that. And if we don't, we can still get bonds, we'll just pay, we'll have a worse bond rating and we'll pay a higher interest rate, and that's not financially sound for us.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I would just point out, like, you can look on page 115, for instance, and that's in the utilities budget, and in their line item budget, you can see a beginning cash balance and an ending cash balance, so you can see how we're spending against that for a variety of funds. Not all departments will have that, but with utilities being a kind of standalone department, they'll have that. When you get to the other funds, you can also see how we're spending against, spending against our balance or adding to it in some cases strategically.
Thank you.
All right, other questions? Counselwoman Hiller.
Thank you, Mayor. Since we're talking in big-picture terms, if we could go back to the issue of budgeting, I think you said it's through miscellaneous, non-departmental, for balances that are available in a variety of funds so that we can spend them if we want to, versus not budgeting them and having to do a budget amendment if we chose to spend? That made me nervous last year because we upped how much we made available, and I was assured there would be some controls if we spent on things that we hadn't planned. Could you talk about that, though, please, somebody?
Well, it's a, it's a pretty big deal if a department spends past its budget, which, you know, I would say we have pretty good controls on the department. We generally let them, you know, give them pretty good flexibility within their operating budgets, hence why we put like vacancy credits outside of, of specific department budgets. But we have, we do monthly reports, we're looking at it on a pretty consistent basis to make sure that we're staying within our means. And again, in previous years, we haven't really come close to spending close to our capacity, but to have that flexibility in the budget, I think, is important in case we do come up on, upon an emergency, to have that, to have that available, I think, is critical.
But there's one thing between moving money that is in the operating budget from one department to another, that flexibility you have as well. There's another thing about tapping into funding source that we weren't expecting to spend, that the council was not aware.
City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, Counselwoman, this is a philosophical debate, obviously, but it has practical implications. Certainly, from a $292 million budget perspective, it's probably not practical for us not to have some contingency slash flexibility built in. Even the best-laid plans, whether we're talking about our personal lives or a medium project or a huge project, things cost more or less than we think, sometimes more. And so, having that flexibility isn't, is, in my mind, appropriate from a practical perspective. Now philosophically, I think, you know, that would be this body's preference, but most city budgets I've been associated with, and philosophically speaking from a staff perspective, we think it's appropriate to have that contingency built in so that there is that flexibility, and on the other side of that coin, that communication with the governing body if those things change in a major way. And I think we've, we've tried to demonstrate that we're going to communicate with you when those major events happen. And, sorry, one, one more thing. And in fact, part of our financial policies say that when we have those sorts of excesses and we want to spend them on something additional, it does come to this body for approval.
Thank you.
Okay, other questions? Good, good discussion, okay.
So, I will jump to page 10 in your book and walk through some of the major changes in the general fund. You can see at the, at the top of that page, we're growing our general fund by close to $1.8 million, so that's a 1.9% increase. In our largest funding source, the general fund is about a third of the budget, and that's, you know, typical in most cities. You'll have a third for the general fund, a third for your enterprise funds like utilities, and a third for, you know, your special revenue, sales tax funds, things like that. But the general fund is what we're focusing on today, and we have a proposed budget of about $93.8 million. And there are several changes, and I, what we've highlighted on this page are changes by account by $50,000 or more, either to the positive or, or to the negative. And have it broken down by personnel, contractual services, commodities and revenues. So, I'll, I'll walk through these, and as there's questions, I'll do my best to answer, answer them, but I'm going to walk through these kind of line by line, and I'll, I'll look up after each one to see if there are any questions or if anyone's falling asleep. This, this first line is a full-time salaries that we've increased by $1 million in the general fund. This includes all the contractually obligated increases for three of our unions, FOP, FIRE and Teamsters, which already have contracts set up for 2018. We have seven total unions, and four of them are in the process right now of going through that. And for those four, we've put in wage assumptions at this time. In addition, on the management and executive side, put in 1% cost of living increases plus a 2% merit pool, and that's about, you know, $350,000 some thousand dollars. There would be an increase in that area. On the employer healthcare contributions, we are anticipating a 15% growth in overall healthcare contributions for the city. This also includes new positions in the city as well, so when you're talking about, 1.4 is about 23%, but there are other positions that have been added. People have maybe moved from a single plan to a family plan, so it incorporates that growth in that line item as well.
There is, and there is no, there was no changes made in the health plan, in the healthcare plan. These are just increased costs for what you just described as well as based on our usage, et cetera. Is that correct?
Yes, and we've had, you know, a couple of years, well, we've had a couple of years, it's based partially on claims. In the last couple of years, we've had some pretty high individual claims, which is added to, you know, the need to increase that.
Okay. Counselwoman DeLisler.
Thank you, Mayor Walgas. Nick, I know that probably we'll get deeper into these later on, but my concern is, I know that the pool went up, but we also had that wellness program that was supposed to help us reduce those expenses. Could you elaborate a little bit on how that's working? Because I know that we had a clause of at a certain point, if it didn't work out, we would get a guarantee that this was going to actually lower our expenses.
Mr. Mayor and Counselwoman, I'd like to ask Jackie Russell, HR Director, to come up, and she can address that since she works with that on a daily basis.
The contractual agreement that we have with Healthstat, which is our clinic provider, has a built-in guarantee after two years of operation. So, we're not at that point yet. When we get to January of 18, we would look back at the prior two years of claims, and then if there is not a, a reduction, there would be a percentage of our administrative fee that would be credited back to the city. Generally, there is a startup cost and a time for getting the clinic fully operational before you start kind of seeing a level off in savings, and so that's why there's a delay in when that guarantee is, is applicable.
Counselwoman Schwartz.
Thank you, Your Honor. As a follow-up to that, being on the committee for a couple of years, part of the discussion was that when we had the clinic, then we would also do the incentive program, that if you're in a category and you move up to, you get healthier and you move up to a better category, you're going to see a savings, whether it's premium or, you know, bonus, whatever. And I asked in our one-on-one if that was going to happen in the next year, and I think the answer was yes. So, with that happening, we will then also see additional savings for that. My question, though, has to do with, I believe that at the end of last year, we recommended that people that were Medicare eligible, such as myself, that was on the city health insurance to move onto Medicare. That has, I have found my out-of-the-pocket costs have gone down being on Medicare. Has that helped the city to have that policy that we put, that people that are Medicare eligible need to go on Medicare rather than staying on city health insurance?
So, it did move about 18 to 20 people off of the city's plan at the end of last year. However, it's going to kind of take this plan year to go through to see what that does to our, our claim savings. So, what that criteria is, if you are a non-active employee and you are 65 or older or Medicare eligible, you're not eligible to stay on the retiree plan. Active employees over age 65 can remain on the plan. Thank you.
Okay. Other questions? Counselwoman Ortiz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to know, where are we at? Are we within the year? Are we coming up on two years?
It would be, the, the point would be January of 2018. The clinic formally opened in January of 16.
So, we'll be at two years on the 18th. Okay, all right.
There you go. Counselwoman Hiller.
Just for some big-picture parameters, it seems like our healthcare costs nonetheless have been sort of exploding instead of going down so far. Our, our sheet on page 10 shows 2017 and 2018. Could you, I mean, obviously, it might be a round number, but how much did it go up from 2016 to 2017?
I was just going to say that we budgeted an increase from 16 to 17 of 18%.
We, I mean, but actual, I'm sorry, what was our actual in 2016?
For, as far as claims or employer contribution? Okay, I think what she's done right there is turning back to the health fund.
Oh, I see.
So, this is...
That's a claim, this is...
This is just the employer contribution for our share of the premium, but, I mean, you're exactly right.
If you could give us just a nutshell...
Yeah, that's one thing we'll focus on with the health fund, or we can even turn to the health fund page. Really, our claims is where you see the impact, and that's on page...
It's 196.
I'm just thinking that, where I'm going with that question is, we had a certain baseline that we started with in 2015. We saw claims explode in 16 and 17, and I was curious, just in round numbers, what those were. And then when, when Jackie talked about the fact that we could get an administrative rebate, you know, what that number might be in terms of how that would compare if, let's say, we don't. I mean, we need to not only level off, but drop down significantly to be back to where we were in 2015.
If I, if I may, Mr. Mayor, jump in here really quickly. We'll go into this in detail on Wednesday night, but I would say that claims and trends tend to ebb and flow, right? And I think you've all experienced that, whether it's with the city or personally. And right now, we're not sure which we're doing, ebbing or flowing, but in any case, we're increasing. Part of that is, we'll have better detailed numbers for you Wednesday, but a lot of our cost is based on statewide averages. So, when they give us a cost every year, it's partly based on our own claims history, but partly those costs are based on what's happening in the area as well. So, part of it we're in control of, which we're trying to do through wellness incentives and the wellness clinic, trying to control what we can, but part of it is quite simply out of our control.
It's about 9% of a medical trend increase, and that's based on the cost of medical services that are provided in the area, so that's kind of what Doug is alluding to. And so, those same claims cost more in 16 and 17 than they did in 15.
And so those same claims cost more in 16 and 17 than they did in 15 because of that trend. We did have significant claims expense in 2016 as well as 2015. So, so far, the first six months of this year, our claims are lower than they have been the prior two years. And we're hoping that we're now in that, that valley of expenses through that natural cycle of how self-funding works.
Okay, other questions? All right, continue.
I'm sorry.
I just wanna say, the governor has put a challenge on the state employees. And I think Jackie and Ms. Hype, I can't remember her name, I should know her name.
Chris O'Malley?
Yeah, she puts a, she is always putting stuff out there. But how we can get our employees to grab it is, is beyond me. But I, I know the state offers big money, so we just gotta keep working at it. I think you guys are doing a great job.
Thank you.
All right, we can proceed.
So the, the third line on here, employer KP&amp;F contribution, that's the police and fire retirement contributions. There's been a slight rate increase, but that's also based off of, you know, any wage increases as well. So that's, that accounts for the $230,000 increase there. On allowable and reimbursements, this is just kind of a slight change in how the accounting works for those previously. That accounts for things like training and education compensation for employees. And previously, that was in a specific contractual line item that moved up in, in 2018 and is reflected as a personnel expense. So that accounts for the increase there. Employer, employer retirement reserve contributions, which affects all the general fund departments. There was a, a rate increase there as we're kind of spending down on, I believe a couple of years ago, you went out and bonded in order to pay for retiree expenses. That is going, starting to go away. We reached the limit on that, and so we've increased, increased the rate charged in order to be able to pay, you know, retirement reserves, so.
And I might speak up to that a little bit, just to provide a little bit of history on that. If you go to page 141, those contributions from the general fund and all funds that have people budgeted and then get put into the retirement reserve fund, which is really a best practice that you establish a fund that you use to pay out employees that are separating or retiring, rather than having the unpredictability of it hitting a department and then the department needing to absorb it, or the, the general fund needing to absorb it. If you all remember five years ago, actually, I think it was 2013, there were, we were coming up to a bubble of retirees, and that was the same year that the cash balance was negative. And you all made the, the big decision to take out bonds, to establish an employee separation fund that we then use to pay out for retiree costs for the next couple of years. The goal was for that to last five years, and actually, we spent the rest, the last of that in 2016. So that lasted three years. So it served its purpose of helping us get through that bubble of retirees. And we paid out a lot of employees through that fund. However, it's certainly something that you don't want to be in the habit of doing while it's allowable by state statute. It is not a best practice to take out financing to pay out for employee retiree costs. So I think it's something that had to be done at the time, but something that we want to avoid doing in the future. So to compensate for that and plan for the future, we have been slowly ramping up how much we pay into the retirement reserve fund. So that's why you see that increase. And then you can see on these fund pages where we expect the balance to go and how much we expect to pay out. In additional, preparing for this meeting, I dove a little bit into last year's Q and A. And last year, we got quite a bit into, Councilman Emerson started asking about, well, how much can employees earn and carry over and when they retire? Do we make some efforts to kind of control what we pay out? And so we've done everything that we can internally to make sure that we are, have good policies and we're consistent about what, what employees can be paid out in the end and try to control those costs where possible.
Does this include vacation payout?
Yes, and it, it depends on the union contract, which actually, we may just go ahead and provide that summary again if that'd be of an interest. Last year, we put together a summary by union that showed what, how much they're eligible for at the time of retirement, retirement, as far as how many hours, who's eligible for what. That's something that also we've been trying to make consistent over the labor groups, just to be fair. For one thing, it just makes sense that no matter where you work or what department you work for, that you'd be under the same qualifications as the person next to you. And also, just a lot better to manage specifically for the HR department. When a retiree comes to them and talks about, you know, what am I eligible for? What's my payout gonna be? Well, they have to say, well, what's your union? Get out the contract. And it just creates a lot of kind of inconsistency across departments. So if that's something that's interesting to you all, we can go ahead and provide that again and just kind of reinstate that that's something we're constantly looking at. Every union negotiation, we review that very carefully. At the same time, making sure that employees are getting what's due to them. Of course, if they've worked hours and earned these hours, it's also something that, of course, we want to provide to them at their time of separation from the city.
Other questions? Okay.
Ms. Mayor, she was asking if we wanted that, I would like it.
Yeah, yeah, I think you're gonna provide that. Yeah, it'd be good to do, thanks.
And in the future, I may, I may just throw that in right after the retirement reserve page just to answer those questions from the start, too.
So, uh, social security going up about 60,000. That is, again, tied to wage increases. Same thing when you get down to CAPERS, the state employee retirement. That rate, which is set by the state, has actually gone down slightly, but due to wage increases, that it's going up. Moving on to contractual expenses increases, street maintenance and the general fund, there will be a presentation on that once we get through this section. Going up in operations by $2 million, and the general fund is going up by 1.25 million, which has not been a part of the general fund in the past. So that is a new expense in the general fund that is showing up. IT fees, and those are, IT is an internal service department within the city, so departments pay into that. Those are going up roughly 3%. That includes telephone, network connections, PCs. Those IT-related costs are going up 3%. Also, it's based on, you know, usage, how many PCs are in each department, et cetera. The, the major increase there is just a 3% increase to account for increases in telecom rates and things like that. Service licenses, this is attributed mainly to public works. They have increases in, I think, six different licenses that they provide. So that's C, Click, Fix, which is kind of our 311 service. Esri, our GIS mapping. And City Works, which is our, our permit portal for the city. So the increases there are, are just tied to contractually obligated increase in, is in those licenses. Vehicle maintenance and the Fire Department, this is really just a reflection of past spending. So this, this number here is based on what the, the department spent in 2016 and what they anticipate spending in 2018 on maintenance. Education and travel, I have three departments listed there, but I'll just kind of highlight the Fire Department. A piece of this is tied to the ALS and providing training and education to, to firefighters who will be trained to become paramedics as well. So that's, you know, the, the large part of that increase. Yep.
Yes, Councilman, Councilman Claire.
Can you explain up above, under allowable reimbursements? And then you said that had something to do with education. We have education and travel here, and down further, we have education and dues. What's the difference between those three educations?
Yeah, so,
Why is it listed in three different times?
Travel is kind of just related to, you know, if you're going to a conference or something, that it counts for, for training purposes. That accounts for the travel for that. On the dues side, those are memberships to various organizations, professional organizations.
So what's the education?
The education, I believe, is just kind of an umbrella account. Just kind of a, a series of, there are a series of different education accounts that are split up between dues, travel, membership, things like that.
So it's not really education, it's travel?
It's tied to education for, you know, different trainings, things like that.
But why do we have it three different times, I guess? Why don't we just have travel dues?
So, you know, allowable are things that are part of like contractually obligated expenses for, that unions have bargained for. A lot of that is tied to different education pieces. So the one that, you know, you'll, you saw the increase on the personnel side. It's really moving the dues from being a contract expense into a personnel expense. But it's, it's still not really an increase there, but it's just a different way of accounting for it.
Okay, yeah.
That's more person-specific, is when you get into the personnel side, each employee has a certain amount that they have for travel, edu, dues, things like that. So it's more tied to the person instead of just a general contract.
Councilwoman, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, go ahead.
The simple way of saying it is, you have a line item called education, and then you have a sub-item under education that says, education dues, education travel, education personnel. So it's, the big line item is education, but it has subcategories under it.
It needs to go in different areas.
Exactly, but that way you have all the accounting of education, and it includes all of the things that it encompasses.
Okay. Thank you.
Good question. That's, that's one that I've had to kind of figure out, a different accounting structure here than in my previous job. So I'm, I'm learning those on a daily basis as well.
All right, okay, questions? Very good, thank you, go ahead.
Vehicle insurance, this is based on just previous claims. I believe we do a, a three-year average of claims on any vehicle accidents in the city. So that's going up based on a, a large number of claims that we've had in, in previous years. So that's the increase there. Moving on to commodity expenditure increases, materials and supplies. This is, includes a couple of different things, but the primary increase there is due to ALS and, and materials for that. It's also kind of a reclassification of expense for the Fire Department. They're spending more in this account. They're spending more in this account, so they've shifted funds to, to better account for that.
Councilman Hiller.
Quick question here, just, just to frame our thoughts. I'm looking back up at like the IT fees, the service licenses, the vehicle insurance, what we just got done. That, that is only general fund. And so that doesn't include what we're spending out of the utilities on, you know, water, sewer, all that.
That's correct.
As well as even the motor fuels tax for a lot of our public works expenses?
That's correct, yes. This is, this is focusing, this is, this is solely general fund.
So it's not our total bill per year on this, and there are variables we're not looking at?
Right. Yes, and we can get in, if you wanna further break out of that, we can get into that on the Wednesday night and talk a little bit more about that.
I just realized that's not our total, because I was looking at that, the total.
Motor vehicle supplies, again, this is, Fire Department's just done some shifting to better account for where their expenses are actually showing up. And so this is another account where that's based on 2016 actuals. Same thing on non-capital equipment, that increase is actually coming from consumable items, which you'll see down on the expenditure decreases side. They've moved funding from there up into here. So when, when I'm looking at this, I'm looking at it by, I'm explaining it by account. So you'll see some increases and some decreases that are tied, tied together that way. Protective gear and equipment, again, that is also based on actual expenses. When we get into, I'm gonna move on to the capital side, and that's where you'll see in the Fire Department, an increase of, of a little over 300,000 for the Fire Department. That is two different things, that's ALS, that's about 115,000 of that increase, and also capital expenses for self-contained breathing apparatuses. There's a contract to provide, I believe, 135 new self-contained breathing apparatuses for the, for the department, that's replacing old equipment.
Councilman Claire.
I don't know if you know, but I'm not good at math, so.
Yeah.
Okay, so in this letter from Mr. Gerber, it says there's 244,000 in the proposed budget for ALS?
Yes.
This adds up to?
It, it does. You know, there are certain, so like materials and supplies is not all, that increase is not all ALS attributed. We can get you a, a better breakout of those expenses, because it's in so many different accounts, training, you know, vehicle supplies, capital expenses. It's, it's hard to kind of do the math in, in your head with, with all those different ones. And when there's also other expenses being incorporated into that. But we can call that out and provide you a, a description, you know, that's a,
Just for the ALS?
Yeah, yeah, and we can do that, for sure. So that accounts for the, the major increases for the city. And I'll, I'll move down to some of the major decreases in the city, which some of these might be a little higher ticket items in those increases. The, the first one is vacancy credits, and we are increasing those by about $950,000. Again, that is something where we probably, just through natural turnover, get about $3 million in savings a year in those expenses. And so we've, we've tried to keep that as low as possible, just to continue to have that flexibility in case something happens, you know? When all of your positions are filled, that's a good problem to have. But just based on past experience, it has, it's not been there. This still, having this at 2.2 million, still allows for some flexibility in there in case, you know, we, we need to fill more, or we can fill more positions, so.
That does not mean that we would require positions to be, remain vacant for a period of time to reach our vacancy credits?
No, I, I think this, you know, having kind of about $3 million on an annual basis that we just naturally get from that, this still allows us to, to stay within that, and, you know.
Councilwoman Claire.
Do we have a list, or do I have to go through that? I know there's a list back here of employees, but is there a list of what departments have what vacancies? Or do I have to?
We do not have a vacancy list. We could, that kind of, you know, changes on a bi-weekly basis. I can, I could point out real quick that we've added a few new positions this year. So we're at a net gain of three positions in the city. And we've added a, a project engineer, a maintenance person, two fire cadets, as well as, this year, we've added two, two inspectors in development services.
Do you know how many total vacancies credits are in this?
You mean by open positions?
Yeah, open positions. I would say we've got, you know, 1,200 employees. At any given time, you've probably, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Usually about 30 or 40, all funds combined.
And a lot of those are police?
Councilman, I think interim city manager is gonna enter into this.
About where I was going with this, but as Nick said, many of these vacancy credits are naturally occurring. And he said they change on a bi-weekly basis. They literally change on a daily basis. And it's not that we're out telling departments, you have to hold a position open for a month or something. Sometimes, just based on our processes, for example, like with police and fire, we have an academy process, and those academies take a significant period of time. That just accounts for why those positions are vacant. It's not any sort of directive from this body or from the manager's office to hold positions open. It is, just as part of the natural process, positions are open and remain open. One way, particularly on the police and fire side, that we are working to address that better, to address our process better, is to have more standardized classes. For example, we've always sort of said, well, when we get to a certain number of people, For example, we've always sort of said, well, when we get to a certain number of people, it's probably time for an academy. What I'd like to see us do is to have routine times where we have those classes. Now, it's going to be a challenge to get there, but that way, our departments know, we know, from a process and budget perspective, we know that every March and October, we're going to have a class. And that just gets us into routine. It's a good practice, and it just allows everyone to plan a little bit better. But this is probably another time to talk about our personnel review committee. As you know, we have a group that meets on a bi-weekly basis, and departments come to, it's myself, it's Nick, Nikki, Jackie, and Michelle Smith from HR. They come to us when they have a vacancy, and they talk about what the position does, what they might like it to do, whether there needs to be a change, and then we all make a decision as to whether we move forward with that position, change it, or don't fill it. I think we have a pretty good process there.
Well, but that, and what concerned me was that, was that is different information than I've been given in the past by the previous city manager, is that we do require departments to hold those open, and especially police. So, it's good to hear you say that we don't.
Well, again, I think I'd go back to what Nick said, and that is, just through natural occurring turnover, we can expect every year about $3 million. Now, full disclosure, we caution departments at the beginning of the year and throughout the year that they need to be careful when they bring us position requests, and if they can hold it another two weeks, that's good for them and that's good for us as a city. So, we're not saying you have to hold this, but it's, it's well-understood, I think, by everyone that they have to use their good judgment in terms of how immediately a position needs to be filled.
But not to the detriment of the city, I would hope.
No.
I would hope not all so. I mean, in, in my own office, for example, we're holding two vacant positions, right? I mean, so, in, in finance, positions were held just, and people just did extra work, and so, that's also sometimes the way it works.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and I think the thing, well, with police, we hear a great deal, but, you know, where they leave, a different, people retire over a period of time, and all of a sudden, you could have 30 vacancies, or what, 20 or 15, but then, we have to have a class and train them, and so, then we get that many, it's sort of, all positions are filled again, and then we start this down. So, that's where the big savings come from, and make, and those are the salaries.
Yeah, no question that police is the biggest driver of this, and fire certainly is a significant driver.
Yeah. Okay. Councilman Hiller.
Back to this toggling back and forth from the whole city to just general fund. The 1,200 figure that was cited is our whole city figure, not our general fund staff figure. Is that correct? How many, so, so if we could drive this vacancy factor that's in the general fund, how many employees are employed by the general fund? Roughly?
Yeah. That, that's probably.
I don't know.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're talking apples and apples each time. It's helpful to have the, the big picture, too.
Yeah, and, and to your point, you know, I think Nikki said probably about 900. We'll call that out and, and get that information to you. But this savings that we're, like the $3 million, that is general fund, is what we're realizing.
Just, just wanted to get the proportions right, because the second half of that question was, we've, we've had a lot of retirements in the last five years, let's say, for a variety of reasons. Have you all done a projection in terms of whether that volume that we've seen that was comfortable, you know, that your, your figure is driven from in the last five years, is that rhythm likely to continue? You know, we, we've just had a lot of people retire out that I think is going to level out a little bit, I think we all hope for. It, has there been a projection corresponding with this estimate that the $3 million is a comfortable figure?
Councilwoman, I think that is, we'd want to have Jackie come up and answer that, but I'm not going to ask her to come up now. We can, we can do some looking into that and get you a solid answer.
Thank you.
Okay.
You know, the, these next two lines for fire are kind of a continuation of the discussion about them, just reallocating expenses to where they're actually occurring, so that's what these next two line items are, and I won't spend too much time on that. On the individual contractual services and the employee compensated personal leave, those are being accounted for and other expenses, and aren't really decreases for the department. I will jump down to line number four under the expenditure decreases and talk about downtown and arts grants. This is our downtown redevelopment incentive program, as well as our arts grant program in the general fund, and those are, downtown redevelopment is being proposed to be reduced from $300,000 to $150,000, and the arts pro, arts grant program is going from $30,000 to $10,000. So, added up, that's $170,000 decrease in the 2018 proposed budget.
I would like to just comment on that, is that particularly with the arts, we're cutting $20,000 out. I know it's a third, and we need the funds in other areas, but quality of life has been stated over and over as one of the needs in our community, one of the, almost like number one of bringing Topeka where we want it to be, and particularly for people living here and young people moving here, et cetera. And I hate to, I reluctant to take away that commitment of $20,000 to show that we, in a sense, could say that we're putting less emphasis on quality of life for the community. I'll let it go at that. Councilman Claire.
Is there a breakdown back here of that line item, the downtown and arts?
We can provide you a list of what grants have been given in the past, and they haven't gone through the process for 2018, so we don't know, like.
I mean, I saw the email.
Yeah.
Is that what you'd be giving?
Yes.
Is that what you mean by the breakdown?
Or you, you want to, we're going to get to it.
Yeah, well, yes. Downtown and arts grant, like, line by line, exactly what is this? What was this, 160 and 130, is it back there?
Oh, so, yeah. I combined it in these lines just to, because of that, brought it over 50,000, but the downtown arts grants, or, sorry, downtown redevelopment incentive program in 2017 is budgeted at $300,000. In 2018, it's proposed being budgeted at $150,000.
Do you have exactly what that pays for?
Yeah, we can, we can send that out.
That's what the, councilwoman, that's what that email that you received addresses.
Okay.
And they're called grants?
Yes.
Aren't they? They're, they're really grants to.
Okay, yes.
And it's sort of confusing in that, that they, they provide grants to in.
To different businesses for like facade updates downtown and other improvements.
All right, thank you.
Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay. Councilman.
Just to follow up on that, I mean, you gave us that detail, and we're seeing a big picture on the budget here. Are those items specifically anticipated? They're not itemized in this schedule of our agendas? Are, are we, were you expecting that we'd get back to them to discuss?
There's not a specific call out for that. If we want to have a discussion on that, we.
And I think, like, is there an amendment? Could, or if we make an amendment and stuff?
Of course, there could be, and just, you know, we're trying to follow what they've scheduled, and it wasn't clear to me that they were, you've, you've talked about a lot of changes, and they're not all scheduled here for discussion.
And that's what I want to make clear, that, so we have, we feel we have that opportunity at appropriate times. Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you, Mayor Woolgas. And I think that this is, these are two things that I'm concerned about as well. I feel like the arts have done a significant amount of work. We take a look at the, the bridge going to Oakland and how we eliminated the graffiti that was happening over there, and, and we have like this partnership with the community. I mean, how that's detracting from crime as well. The other thing is the, the whole downtown revitalization process. I so appreciate the efforts of staff. I know that there was a talk about maybe having even less funds going out to downtown, and there has been an effort to add more funds. And I think that that does merit a discussion, at least for the body, because for those that are not informed with regards to the impact that those grants have in our community, those are dollars that go directly into facades and the structures of the buildings that are downtown that we're trying to bring back to life. And those dollars stay, and they generate sales tax dollars that add to the pool of funds that we have in our community, so really is an investment pool. So, eventually, when the time is right, it would be great to have a conversation about these things. But at the same time, it's kind of hard for us to have that conversation, knowing that three of us sit on the economic and community development committee, and also saw a decrease of $100,000 to many grantors. I'm sure that all of us have had our emails blown up with the organizations that have not received funding, and I'm sure that that's going to be another topic of conversation. But these are some of the things that we have to weigh. Where do we put our funds so that they provide an investment for us? And, and what are our priorities? So, thank you.
And I think it's, I have 10:21, so I think we will have our break at this time.
Hurry back.
And if it's, you know.